October twentieth meeting of the Planning Board, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we do roll call, I wanted to announce that Member Ray had to resign and Commissioner Marriott has appointed Board Member Grant Izzy to replace him, so welcome to the board and I wanted to thank Member Ray for his service to the Planning Board. We can go ahead with roll call.
Member Izzy?
Here.
Member Perry?
Here.
Vice Chair Angelidis?
Here.
Member Grocott?
Here.
Chair Hubbard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any changes to the agenda for today?
And to the new member and the clerk, we want to make sure that they fill out the forms. They don't have to be done at the meeting, but at some point you need to fill out some forms with the clerk.
He has, and he's been sworn in.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I just wanted to add the, for an update on meeting with the state on the Phil, in the minutes it said that that would be followed up at this meeting.
Could you speak a little bit louder? I'm not sure I'm hearing you all the way down at this end for some reason.
Sure. I was just asking for a status update on the Phil question that I raised, because it said in the minutes it would be Phil would be addressed at this meeting.
Should we add to discussion item? What is the subject matter?
The Phil.
Oh yeah, Phil, okay. Yeah, I'll add it as five B. Any other changes?
Chair Hubbard, I'd like to also add a discussion item for the status of Faves One Density Pool Evaluation, the draft report, also with.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Angelidis?
Yes.
Member Grocott?
Yes.
Member Izzy?
Yes.
Chair Hubbard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any audience comments? Caitlin, as your chance, no? Okay, we will move on to approval of the September fifteenth meeting minutes. Are there any changes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth meeting as written.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Angelidis?
Yes.
Member Grocott?
Yes.
Member Izzy?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Chair Hubbard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, action item four A is the review and approval of the 2026 meeting dates. I spoke to Brandon about the dates in advance. I have conflicts for February and March, and I wanted to see if everyone is amenable to moving those dates and obviously if anyone has other dates they have concerns with.
Just check the calendar real quick. Moving them to what?
The, the March one's the easy one. If we could just push it one week to March twenty-third, the, this room is available on that date same time as normal. Okay, so if everyone's okay with that one, that's easy. February, I could miss the meeting if I had to. I'm out of town from the thirteenth through the twenty-third, so I don't know if we would want to just remove it during that week if that's an option, or figure it out if, if you need to check room availability.
We, we can check room availability. Do you need to happen offhand?
February seventeenth or nineteenth is good for the clerk's office, or you won't be here then?
Yeah, I'm out thirteen through twenty-three.
Since the one in January is so late, the twenty-sixth, perhaps towards the end of, towards, we're going to do it when you come back, I'd say the twenty-fourth or after, right?
Yeah, yeah, that would be ideal if, if there's availability.
Okay, let me look, twenty-fourth, I can't do it Tuesday. I'm getting there.
So twenty-fifth, maybe?
Twenty.
We won't be able to do the twenty-fifth. That will be board of adjustment, but the Thursday looks like it would work, if it works for the clerk.
So February, I have February twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth open.
Twenty-sixth would be.
Yeah, that works.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
Okay, I appreciate that, everyone. So, we will amend the 2026 meeting dates to February twenty-sixth, four PM, and the March date becomes March twenty-third at four PM. Okay, if everyone's okay with that, can I have a motion to approve as amended?
Make a motion to approve revised dates as amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Angelidis?
Yes.
Member Grocott?
Yes.
Member Izzy?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Chair Hubbard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, action item four B is ordinance twenty-two-five dash twenty-one. Brandon, you're leading this?
Yes, I have a PowerPoint. You get that pulled up. So, last month, we brought this item to both Planning Board and City Commission as a discussion item. We did receive direction from both the board and the commission at that time. This is content that is intended to address all the discussion topics. I know there was not necessarily consensus on some of the topics. That was the same for the commission as well. We're simply asking for feedback and drafted standards. I prefer to draft the standards and then be told no, or be told it needs to be modified, just so we have something that can address what was, what was brought up this discussion. These amendments are intended to address some of the most common issues encountered when we see redevelopment, also elevation of homes. We've gone from seeing about one home elevation per year, to seeing dozens and dozens this year alone. We expect many more in the coming, coming year as well. So, we've started to see challenges that we never really had to address before. Of course, those properties that are non-conforming or built right at setbacks may have different challenges than those that are being developed new, but we are looking at some items that will address new development as well. So, just going through the list of sections, starting off with three point ten vested rights non-conformes, dealing specifically with stair encroachment. Currently, the only permission for stairs in the code is found in a later section, six point twenty-two, which I'll address in a moment. That allows for stairs to encroach three feet into the required front yard, and that is a static standard across the city. Most residential properties in the city are allowed to have stairs encroached to seventeen feet. So, if a home is built within the required front setback, in most cases, they cannot have stairs within that yard, except through variants. This would allow front yard stair encroachment by right for homes with non-conforming front setbacks that are elevated in place. We had taken this forward as an amendment back at the end of last year. We had left this to staff discretion. We weren't really know what was, what we were going to be facing at that point, and, and we have allowed staff discretion for some encroachments, but we would prefer there to be standards that apply to all residences the same. The stairs must be on roofed, except by extension of the primary home's eaves, and it must have an open base. That would be eighty percent transparency between the treads, landing, and footer. You can see some local examples of that on the right. Stairs for non-conforming homes, under the current drafted standard, would be permitted to encroach to either ten feet from the front property line. That would be all districts. We do have lesser setbacks for those residences in Passageway. For those, it would be a five-foot setback from the front property line. For those homes that are built substantially into the front yard setback, there would also be a permission to go closer than ten feet to the front property line, provided that they are no closer than the front wall of the residence, or three feet, whichever is greater. We see many homes, especially on cul-de-sacs, that were built in the mid-century, where the home might be built at a five, seven, ten-foot setback. So, in this case, the stairs could encroach into the front setback to match the front wall of the residence. And here are some examples. Another shot from one of the photos I showed on the previous screen, and then showing the second standard that I just spoke about on the right. That is a home that was built at eight feet, three inches, and the stairs encroach no closer than the existing retained front wall of the structure when it's elevated. And then I showed these graphics in the presentation last, last month, just something I mocked up quickly, but the existing standard, you can see on the left, even if the stairs are encroaching no closer than the front of the structure, even if you're dealing with a non-conforming front setback, there would currently be a variance required to go any closer than seventeen feet. In the proposed standard, the stairs both meet the front wall of the building standard. They're also no closer than ten feet. They would be allowed administratively. And this is showing again that, that ten-foot standard that would be allowed, that would be enabled on the right graphic, currently is not permitted. The home in this case is built into the required front setback. No stairs at all can be built in the front of the residence. This would allow for stairs to be built to a minimum ten-foot front setback. We also talked last month about accessory structure retention for those structures, for those primary residences that are being substantially improved. The standard we discussed, and again, there was not agreement among all members, and that was the same for the commission as well, but this would allow for non-conforming deck covers, gazebo's, and pools, those structures that we tend to see that are a little bit more costly, to remain in the required yards when the home is being substantially improved, but adding no more than ten percent in living area. That would exclude the finishing of garages and carports that are located with, under the, under the primary roof line. Most residences we've seen that are elevated in place, they are finishing out that space. That was previously a garage or a carport. That was part of the main roof line. But this would be for those homes that are maybe not adding a whole additional living story. They're effectively just trying to get the living level out of the floodplain and finish out that space that was used as garage or carport. The accessory structure is not being substantially improved, and one comment made at last month's meeting was, well, you know, if, if the home was substantially damaged, but the deck cover remains and was not substantially damaged, that's probably a fairly rare occurrence, but we are seeing quite a few homes that are being substantially improved without having been substantially damaged. In several cases, they sustain very little damage. They're still choosing to elevate above the floodplain, so that would apply largely to those, those residences that are voluntarily elevating over concerns over future storms and not to remediate existing damage or bring in the compliance with the FEMA requirements. The other requirement would be that the accessory structure does not cross the property line. It doesn't exist within the easement. Those structures would need to be made conforming. That's not a permission we really address through zoning codes, so they would need to comply if, if they meet either of those criteria. This does not allow for non-conforming accessory structures as drafted to be substantially improved or replaced without setback compliance. This is only for those residences where the primary residence is being substantially improved, the accessory structure is being left alone, or just being repaired. They would be able to remain as, as they exist, but if they're being taken down and replaced, they need to comply with the code. Looking at residential storage buildings, again, we do not have consensus on this. That goes for the commission as well. This would allow for storage buildings to be increased from eighty to one hundred and twenty square feet. That's a request we, we frequently get. That goes on to the board of adjustment. The height would remain at eight feet. That is currently the standard, would be the standard that remains based on the draft. It would require all storage buildings to be tied down to meet wind loads following substantial improvement of the residence, regardless of the size of the storage building, whether it complies with the current eighty square feet, whether they're installing a new building, that is one hundred and twenty square feet. Even for those that already exist on the property, they would need to be tied down. They would be treated as a, a new structure for tie-down requirements. Looking at equipment inside yards, this is one that we frequently run into, and there's an example on the right of one I just looked at recently. Currently, the code allows for those structures that are not being substantially improved, where the equipment needs to be elevated by the Florida Building Code above the floodplain, to be elevated four feet in place above the floodplain. For those homes that are substantially improved, they need to relocate the equipment. We have received some concern from residents about needing to move the equipment. It can be costly in, in certain instances, so this would not only clean up this section, it's been something we've been adding on to for about twenty years now, so it's gotten a little bit difficult to interpret, but we're also looking to allow for in-place elevation of existing equipment, equipment that already exists at grade. The home's being elevated in place. The equipment would be elevated along with it, and that's a requirement of the Florida Building Code, so they would be making that equipment compliant along with the primary residence. The front yard encroachment would be limited to five feet. We see very little equipment that is attached to the front of the residence. Most is, of course, on the side or in the rear, but for that equipment that's in the front yard, it would have a encroachment limitation for elevation. Pedestal column setback elevations are limited to three feet within the side yard, so if they were to put it on a solid base, it would need to meet a three-foot setback. As the same standard that we currently allow for stairs, they're allowed to have a column base, an enclosed base, but they are required to meet that three-foot side setback. That would apply to the equipment as well. And equipment would be limited to one foot above the lowest floor or the design flood elevation, so the equipment couldn't be elevated twenty feet in the air. If the home's only being elevated to eight or nine feet above grade, it would follow the living level, which is a floodplain requirement. Newly installed equipment, so if someone is elevating the AC unit, but they're also looking to install a generator, that new equipment, based on what has been drafted, would need to meet all of the yard setbacks. And newly constructed homes' equipments would need to meet all yard setbacks, as well as currently drafted. Going on to stairs, and this applies to all single and two-family residences. That's whether they're built, being redeveloped, built new, or for those homes that don't need to comply with the section three point ten standards, this would apply to them as well. This would allow three-foot encroachments for stairs without independent roof overhangs. That is the standard the city has in place today. It would allow a seven-foot encroachment, so that's two rows of stairs, meeting the minimum width requirement into the front yard for stairs without roofs and with an open base. Again, that's eighty percent plus transparent below the treads and the landing and the, the footer. And this was something that was brought up by the commission. We did not discuss this at last month's meeting, to my recollection, but we wanted to look at, we were directed to look at some of the odd lots, and there are many platted lots in the city that are still developed that we need to take maybe a little bit more of a deeper dive into. That's something we're going to have to address and, and really think through with this board in, in the next couple of months, but cul-de-sacs are a little bit more approachable. There are other standards that other municipalities have adopted, and other standards that, at least in, in first passing, makes sense to staff. What we drafted for consideration is to allow for the front yard setback requirement to be based on a line established, taking the tangent of the arc of the front of the cul-de-sac. Currently, the setback requires twenty feet, and that's taken from the actual arc of the front property line, so it, it arcs inward from the cul-de-sac front property line. This would allow for a tangent line to be established. It's really more beneficial for those properties on a very aggressive arc, where they are unlikely to wrap the home at the, at the arc of the front property line. This would allow for a tangent line to be established based on the, the furthest point of that arc, and it would be set fifteen feet inwards, so they would have a standard setback line that's a little bit more permissive than the twenty allowed today, based on that consistency at the frontage there. This does not remove the option to make use of the twenty-foot setback permission. That's what's currently in the code. This is just an alternative standard, and this is what we could come up with within the period of time that we had to, to look into this.
I did have a question about that one.
Sure.
I saw it in the packet, and it does explicitly state cul-de-sac, so on my street, for example, there are corner waterfront lots who have as tight a turn as a cul-de-sac probably does, so I didn't, I didn't think it needed to be specific to cul-de-sac, if there's a mathematical formula that could be set when you are on one of those pie-shaped lots.
Certainly, we, we can definitely look into that. We currently have a special permission for cul-de-sac, which is why I drafted, but we, we do run into that from time to time with those pie-shaped turning lots. In terms of comprehensive plan consistency, the comprehensive plan typically does not directly address accessory structures, including those for residences, but we do address generally residence suitability and allowing residences to be updated and, and match current demand and community character, maintaining residential character within the city, preserve and rehabilitate existing housing, and review our codes periodically to make sure that we're meeting the current housing needs of the city, continuing to ensure the health, welfare, and safety of the city. These are obviously challenges we were not facing a year and a half ago. These were issues that probably would have taken decades for us to really accumulate enough data to, to know that these were going to be issues, but we've seen so many different situations in the last eight to, eight to ten months that these are starting to come to the forefront. So, as I mentioned, we bring these forward for consideration. We understand that there is not board consensus in all of these items. If, if you do find these amendments are suitable to move forward, as we may modify during discussion today, we will be presenting them to the City Commission for First Reading next Tuesday. We do find that some of these are major priorities based on some of the challenges that we're facing. Some of them are supplementary, supplementary to those, but the stair encroachment and equipment elevation, we see those on more than fifty percent of the, one or the other on fifty percent or more of the home elevation permits, so those are really the ones that we feel are, are major updates that we need to be looking at in the near term. If there are accessory structure concerns or other things that the board feels need a little bit more time to be addressed, we can certainly break those out, but the, the stair encroachment and the equipment elevation, we would, we would hope we can move forward from this meeting. So, with that being said, we do ask that the board sit as a local planning agency to take any action on this case. We would ask that you motion to approve, approve with modification or deny, or sorry, recommend approval, approval with modification or denial of this ordinance, and find it consistent or not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, I will temporarily adjourn as the Planning Board and reconvene as a local planning agency. Any thoughts?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, I watched the last few meetings, especially this one, because I knew this was coming up. So, a couple, couple thoughts I have. I, I think, first of all, getting this done fairly quickly is important, because people are getting contracts in place, so I think, you know, we're doing the right thing here on landings. One of the top. ................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, so what you're looking at here are my working papers. And if you look at what's behind this in the packet that I gave you, what you'll see, like if you see the R311.2 egress door in the package, these are the Florida building codes. And so they tell you about the egress door. They tell you the width of the landing, different elevations. So the, these codes that with the R, again, these are the ones that go for residential. And if you look at 311.7.6, it talks about landings for stairways. And I did question if it's interior or not, because, you know, I'm glad to know, Brandon, what you said about if you're above the floodplain, you can open in. But from everything I've read, in a high-wind area, you're better off not to open in, because in a high wind, your doors can get blown in. So you have to take a lot of things into account. In addition to the wind, you have to think about what if you're trying to put in a refrigerator or a couch, or the fire department has to get in with all their equipment. There's a lot of considerations into landings. So the very last page of this, 1011.6, stairway landings, is from the Florida building code. And that does talk about the width of landings in relationship to the stairways and about doors opening in, et cetera. So, and it talks about you need to have a landing within every 12 foot, 7 inches in a residential. So I put this here just to make it available for people. But the main thing is this drawing. And I was talking to Ralph earlier about stairway to heaven. But basically, I had a worksheet where counted with the, you know, stairs 10 inches by seven and a half, yeah, stairway to heaven. And these are just working papers, you know, nothing special. But what I'm trying to show here is that if you look at the landings and you follow all these recommendations in the building codes, you basically have a couple of options. So the first door swinging is a three-foot door swinging out. And you can see that the landing could either be, the minimum would be four feet, 6 inches, or you could go to five feet. And then you can see the stairs in this particular case are not up against the building. They're three-foot stairs, but there's a foot on either side of them of space. So I know from our last meetings, you're absolutely correct. We were talking about what should a landing recommendation be. And so that's why, pulling all this together, it looks like there's a couple of options. You know, it could either be six-foot wide by five feet, or it could be four feet, six by four feet, six, and it would meet all of this stuff that's in these codes. So, well, yes, this is a single door. And there certainly are other options. But I'm just trying to get into the actual code so that we could come up with some recommendations that would be more meaningful or easier for people to follow. So I hope that's a little bit helpful. It's one way to do it. The other thing I would show you in this packet while we're talking about landings is how to place the stairs. And if you could go to the sheet that kind of looks like it has a bunch of squares on it. So this is a, this is a couple of examples. This particular drawing is 10 foot above grade, the first one. And you can see it has a five-foot landing, I mean, a five-foot out from the building, six-foot landing. It has 11 stairs going down for 10 feet. Then it has another three-foot landing, and then it has another few steps coming down, two and a half feet. So that's like going along in front of the building. The one below that is a little bit different because it puts a different kind of landing and splits it coming down side by side as opposed to along with. And that one, it can, shows you what size it would take to do that in. So again, these are compliant with the code. They are not the only way to do things. But what I was trying to get together was something that would help clarify what exactly we were talking about.
Do you want me to go to my next? I only have one more topic, but do we want to stay on landing and stairs with everybody first? Or do you, because we want to bounce around?
Do you have an opinion?
It's up to the board.
Yeah, you can continue.
Okay, so the second thing I wanted to bring up, I hadn't heard it talked about, but I've talked to a lot of my neighbors and friends. And actually, this issue was one of the reasons why we decided not to raise our house, but to use flood areas instead. And the issue kind of comes to, it's a quality of life issue for a lot of people that, once you raise your house, now it's not as easy, you know, to get down, now to get outside to enjoy your morning coffee or whatever. You go through that extra effort. Most people are not going to do that, right? They're going to have their coffee, or they'll look out their window, or they're sliding windows, which now have no balcony, because they're within a setback. So I had asked Brandon earlier about that. Should we consider, and I, obviously, I think we should, that's why I'm bringing it up, for folks to have outdoor living space in a house which they're raising to become more resilient, to live here and enjoy the things that they've had? Should we allow them to have balconies in the back, even if it goes into a setback, to a certain level, to a certain size? And I don't have necessarily a size in mind, although I kind of do. But I think one of the, you know, one of the impacts of raising your home, and I've seen them, if you've seen some of the homes that have been raised or they've added another story and you look from the back, it's like a sheer wall, right? And now they can't, they've either had to fill in their sliders, but they can't enjoy from their, from their current living level, they can't really enjoy the outdoors anymore, their back. They can't be outdoors unless they purposely have to go now downstairs, outside. And there's all kinds of issues with now stairs. You know, people are having front stairs, or they're going to have back stairs. Some people can't have back stairs because of setbacks. So, so what I'm, why I'm bringing this up is proactively, should we have this conversation now about letting folks have some outdoor living space, which they've lost, basically, with raising their home, trying to do the right thing? Some folks have multi-story homes that are raising and had balconies, or have balconies on that second floor already, that are, say, seven feet, eight feet. But now, because they don't meet the setback requirements, because those houses, you know, were non-conforming. But they're now, they're being told they can't put a balcony up on, which would now be their second floor, because it's within the setback. So I would think, you know, at least let them have what they had before. So I know it's a new topic, and I know we're trying to, and like I said, we're trying to get this done quickly. But I'm having a lot of conversations on this right now. Quality of life, it meets one of our core values. It also improves and enhances our property values, ultimately, in the long run, to have that outdoor space. So should we consider that? And I would, I would like to offer up that I think we should. So I'll leave it at that.
Chair Hubbard, on that point, I'd like to say quality of life for the homeowner, yes. Quality of life for the neighbors, not necessarily. You know, and I understand it's a tough, tough battle and decision on how we protect homeowners' property values and the fact that people are investing a lot of money to elevate their houses. But as that stands for so many of these property owners, and we're seeing it, where, you know, they're next to single stories and they're hulking over them now already. And then if we extend that more to say, and put a balcony out there, and go into the setbacks, and now you're outside with that. And having the home itself, so many of these homes themselves already being so close. I mean, we're not living on large lots here. I'm just concerned when you then start doing outdoor activities at that elevated level, so close to your neighbors, on waterfront lots in some cases, that we're then, you know, perhaps, you know, maybe sacrificing the values of many for the values of one on surrounding properties. So I would just, you know, throw that out there as my, my opinion, how we would balance that. That would just be my concern, is balancing the property values across the neighborhood in those cases.
Would you be okay with, if someone already had an existing balcony on their second level, but they're now raising their home, would you allow them to put the same balcony back at the same basic spot that their balcony was before they raised their home?
Oh, because the attachment point was the second floor, which is now?
It was the second floor. So there's no, like, they're not asking for anything more than what they had previously.
Would that not currently be allowed?
So they're allowed to elevate an existing balcony with the home, but if they were to now make the home three stories, if they had a balcony on the second living floor, and then they elevated it, they could not put another balcony onto the first living floor. So they would lose what was previously a walkout deck space at grade.
If it's in the setback.
Correct, if it's in the setback.
But to, I mean, to your point about the neighbors, and whether I agree with it or not, they're not, it's no real different than what was there before, right? So would we allow existing balcony, you know, the existing type?
Of that, formerly.
Yes, exactly.
I feel like I would be okay with that if it was the same footprint, same type of balcony in the same place it had been. It's not encroaching any more than it already had been. So, I mean, yeah, that wouldn't bother me. I agree with Never Grow Cut on adding a balcony that had not been there post-elevation, because if you're already at the setback limits, I feel like a reasonable-sized balcony is going to have to have five feet of depth. So you could potentially be at your lot line and pass a grill, or perhaps going from 10 feet to five feet. But that seems like it would be pushing the limits, unless you're maybe beachfront, and then I probably wouldn't care.
Would you care if it was waterfront?
I don't think I'd care in that case, because there's not an adjacent neighbor off that direction.
So I'll say I have one of those very odd-shaped properties that goes like this, and then it goes like this. If I had a balcony, I would be hulking over three of my neighbors. If I don't want to get that house, that single-story house. And because the lot is a very, again, weird, weird shape, I would be absolutely looking at them every day in the yards, just. I mean, that's why we decided not to elevate to begin with, is, you know, just that very weird, weird thing. But I'm, had I, had we done it and then put a balcony on that was non-conforming on top of it, it would be really disadvantaged to my, to our neighbors. It would hurt their property values significantly, I feel. Yes, it would improve mine, but at the cost of three others.
I think one of the things we need to think about, and I thought about it a lot in this particular agenda. We need to try to understand why the setbacks were put there to begin with. For example, not to take a tangent, but I don't understand why, in brand-new construction, we need to make exceptions on the setback, because you can design things for your lot. And I think if we do that, and I see it in here, then we're opening Pandora's box. And I don't really know that we've had enough discussion about the ramifications, like you're raising, to really make sure we understand what we're talking about. So I think we have to be very careful when we're looking at setbacks. Just because we don't want to hurt other people, we want to help everybody.
What are the purposes of setbacks? What's the stated purpose of a setback? Is it for, is it for your neighbors, or is it for fire and safety and what have you?
It's all of them, depending. Typically, side is fire and access, front is visual encroachment overcrowding, things like that. And in some cases, we, not here in St. P. Beach, but there's frequently, you know, front yard easements and things like that. So it's a combination.
I think the other thing we need to remember, and I know it's not, you know, your number-one choice, but we do have the Board of Adjustments, and we do have other methods. So if we, if we don't really understand or have thought through the full implications of a global change, then, you know, it's not like people are just being told, no, you can't do it. They may have to go through an extra step. But I think that does put the thoughtful consideration of why this doesn't fit in a good, in a good process.
I agree with that, you know, because people can go through the design process, they can work with professionals, they can, you know, try to get to a solution that is compliant. And again, you know, going through the Board of Adjustments, you know, be able to articulate, you know, either this was cost prohibitive, this was not structurally feasible. I mean, there are reasons why people cannot make it work. And in that case, to your point, I think you're absolutely right. That's why we have the Board of Adjustments, so people can go in and articulate that and provide their documentation and have thoughtful case-by-case, you know, decisions on those non-conforming requests.
I'm certainly not opposed to discussing it further. I don't think we're going to solve it today. But if you wanted to make recommendations to how we modify the code, that can be proxy through Brandon, and we can easily add it as a discussion item for next meeting and do some deep dive into that topic.
And certainly, if the board believes that some of these items need a little bit more time for discussion, and we can move others on today, happy to do that as well. It's, it'll be a recommendation to the commission, and if they give direction, we'll bring those back for.
All right, Brandon, simply for me, then, just based on, because I want to move forward, the wording would be basically, you know, replace in-kind, and like, something we've already kind of done with other things. So to keep it very simple and to potentially let it move forward next week with the commission.
Okay, and that would be specifically for balconies being reestablished in setbacks? They would be in the same footprint openness design that is?
Has the balcony that was there in that certain location, yes.
I think that makes sense. Would they forfeit the previous balcony that would be going up a level?
We wouldn't tell them, we wouldn't ask them to tear down the other one, you know. But, you know, and again, the re, part of the reason I'm bringing this up, I'm just thinking about the living space issue.
Yeah.
Right? Before raising your home, and people are doing it for the right reasons, you enjoyed, you walked out of your main living area, you enjoyed your outdoor living space. People are raising their homes for, again, for all the right reasons. But now, enjoying your living space is different than what it was. And part of the appeal to live down here is enjoying the outdoor living. And that's being taken away inadvertently because of this. And so the, so the point was to bring back some of that quality of life for folks so they could step out in the morning and have their coffee or do whatever. I obviously don't agree with, with what was said about the neighbor part earlier. You know, I think I have a very, I guess, definitive thought process about, you know, properties, property lines and stuff, but, but I understand it, I understand it. So just to get something, you know, moving, where people had something, you know, there already, you know, that solves very small number of people that had a balcony on their first floor already on their bedroom level and were able to, you know, at least they can have the same thing they had, right? Because it, because it is an issue, you know. And I've talked to a lot of people who have raised their homes before or bought, sold homes and bought an elevated home. And they have said that the thing they miss the most is spending time outdoors, because you just won't do it, right? If you have to take those extra steps now to go up and down the stairs, especially as people are getting older, you know, we have, you know, the aging population, they're just not going to have the same quality of life. And it, how important is that to us, right? To the big picture of, you know, neighbors, setbacks, property lines and all that. So if we can just let people right now have what they had, then it's a start. And then I guess we can address it in the Board of Adjustments or what have you.
Chair, could I have some questions on the Visebo pool key page?
Sure.
Discussion as well. So as I understand it, you know, if they're non-conforming now, but those structures themselves are not being significantly improved, just the houses as it's written, those could stay. So if I have a pool cage and it's attached to my home, and I have to detach it from my home to elevate that house, haven't I put it in a position where that has to be substantially improved, basically? Because I've now detached at least part of it to elevate that. And I've watched them do these houses. I mean, they have to get around those houses to do those improvements. So at that point... So, at that point, aren't they then themselves gonna have to be substantially improved? Because we've probably had to take off at least enough of it to get all, all the way around that house to do the elevation. At that point, you're probably not mis- hodgepodgeing a cage, pool cage back together. Your thoughts on that?
Well, we, we would, we would have to add in pool cages to this exemption. We would have to tweak it if we were to account for something like that. We see so few pool cages that it's, it's, it's a rare circumstance. But with deck covers, we have had situations where the property owner is looking to elevate the home. They're looking to keep the deck cover. It was detached, or they're detaching it in the elevation. But they haven't been able to keep it because they're elevating, they're substantially improving. So this is really what that was intended to address. But we would have to modify the standard to both add pool cages and to not consider the substantial improvement of the structure, because, you know, the value of that would be much lower than a, than a pool or a-
Right, right, right. Okay, so we're mainly talking about detached structures then? Because again, anything that's attached to that house, once you elevate it, is pretty much done. I mean, it's gotta be taken off. You've gotta have that span for those beams to go in, which go well, extend well past the, the perimeter of the house as they elevate those houses. So I would think that they would be not, you know, they wouldn't be able to survive that in most cases. So if you're saying it's a detached, what we're looking at is detached gazebos that are maybe like in the center of a yard.
Correct.
That are into the setback, and they just want to keep that.
Correct, yes.
I understand that.
We don't prohibit pool cages currently, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay.
No, I was just trying to understand what the, like, anything attached to the house.
Yeah.
Again, I can't imagine it surviving the elevation of a house if it's attached to a house, because it's going to have to come down to have that work done. So it's, it's, we're talking about independent structures that are in the setbacks and just leaving them as be because nothing's happened to them and nothing's going to happen to them. They weren't damaged or, or whatever that is.
Correct.
How that's being monitored, I don't know, but yeah, okay, I understand that.
Okay. Member Izzy and member Perry, are you, do you feel that changes need to be made before you can recommend approval for the landing topic? Or does it as written meet your-
Well, I, I've actually gone through the whole document and I have questions all the way through it, so. Um, I, I don't think the landing in, as it exists, and I appreciate Brandon saying that this was, you know, a draft and that he, he wanted or recommended modification. So I think he was trying to put some, a straw man out there for everybody, and I think he, he did it, whoever did this did a great job. I don't think the landing section is flushed out in here well at all. And that was one of the reasons that I brought in some working papers, because I, I do think there needs to be some more work done on that. Um, and I found other inconsistencies, so I don't think, as it's ready right now, it's not ready. And I don't know, you-
No, I, I agree. I, I think some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting weren't addressed yet in the, in the landing. You know, obviously, the landing should meet any Florida building code requirements. And then, you know, anything else that we think necessary for safety or what, what have you. But it should be in there. It should at least say, say that. The two, the two foot on either side was just because I know we, we were asking those kind of questions last time.
Yeah, yeah. Are these, are these changes you feel could be adapted into it without changing the overall intent? So we recommend with modifications and trust Brandon to implement?
Yes, yes.
Okay. If there are no questions, uh, oh, go ahead.
There's a list of questions, there's a list of questions.
Not related to landings, okay.
Can we, yeah, we've gone to-
Sure, yeah.
Nonconforming uses, and I think that, that came into discussion when we were talking about some of the land development codes and, and especially, I think, in this area, the town center area. So I just wanna make sure I understand what, what exactly this is recommending, so.
What page are you on?
I'm on page seven right now.
Okay.
And it says, "No structure which is nonconforming uses located shall be enlarged, altered, improved, or relocated outside of portions of the lot." So, anything that is in a nonconforming, deemed nonconforming use right now, if it is improved, it doesn't say substantial, it says improved period. That is not authorized. It would have to come into a conforming use, is that?
Correct, so, and this, this is the current code standard. We're not making any changes. It's something we'll be talking about in the next item. But currently, if someone has a single family home and the home is in a commercial district, they can't add a, add on to the residence, they can't elevate. They can keep exactly what they have, but if they're looking to do any work that would add on, including if it's a substantial improvement, they can only do that work if they're going to convert the use.
And I think it was more, we had some businesses that bring on conforming use as well.
I think there were also some single families in, like, around Corey area.
Yeah, yeah, so there is, is no use for that. Okay, I just wanted to understand that. And then I have one other thing that was included in this, and that was the, um, accessory structures as far as the-
Accessory structures?
Yeah, the, yeah, accessory structures, six point thirteen on page ten. Um, it said, "No mechanical equipment shall be operated within, or within the attached, within or attached to such a building." When I just Googled the definition of mechanical, um, equipment, it, it's really diverse, so. Do, and then when I went to city code and looked for a specific definition for mechanical equipment, there wasn't a specified. I think the closest I got was section six five. It said, uh, "Anything that would be normally used for domestic or household purposes." I, I mean, is my drill, I, I get a little concerned when we use a really broad term like mechanical equipment. I mean, can I put a, you know, small window, air conditioning in my shed if I want to use it for refurnishing furniture? For example, is that considered mechanical equipment? Can I, can I have my drill in there? I mean, what, what are we considering mechanical equipment? Or can we define, better define mechanical equipment in this section, I think would be very helpful.
Okay.
Because it's, it's too vague. In my opinion, it's too vague, ask Brandon.
Thank you. I would, I would, is it accurate that such equipment, air, air conditioning, for example, would not be allowed? Because presumably the shed would be below flood, okay.
Correct.
But I just want specifications of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, the Google definition was diverse.
I, I think the intent was probably to avoid establishing a workshop or something like that in the shed, but we could definitely clarify that. I, I agree.
But if we're gonna make a shed larger, then presumably we're gonna have more people going like, "Great, have a new workshop," you know?
It's a good one.
One, is present, present company included, for anyone else to, I can do more, do more projects. So I just-
Washers and dryers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We want to make sure that we're, we're specifying what that is.
Is mechanical the zoning term for air conditioning, the way it is in building? Is that what they intended? I, I don't know. I'll have to trace back. This, this was probably in our code since two thousand and three, so I'm not sure what they meant by that, but that type would be a good guess.
Because mechanical contractors, typically the AC people, so I would expect that to just be compressors and stuff, but it'd be anything, yeah.
Is a residential accessory structure allowed to have electric service?
Well, um, we, we do classify garages under that, so yes, but we, we, we specifically call those out, so.
So detached garage can have electricity, but a storage shed cannot?
That's a good question. Um, I don't think it explicitly says no, but I'd, I'd have to talk with the building department about that.
Okay.
And member Perry, if you don't mind, thank you very much for these drawings. These, these are excellent. I did want to ask about the landing, just for, for direction. I think what we drafted into the code was a six foot width or the Florida building code requirement, whichever is greater. When you were talking about the landing side needs, size needs to be fleshed out, were you referring more to the depth? Or is there more work to be done in the width as well?
Well, I think the, the width is pretty much done. I think the depth probably needs to be talked about. But if you, if you look at the, at the code, I think it does talk a lot about the width. And you, and he, and here you also mentioned the width.
Are you talking about depth as it protrudes from the house?
Well, how far it comes out from the house.
Into the-
Right, because one of the things I, I have that I want to talk about is, um, and I, I'll let you finish. Like, when it talks about, I've got all my stuff written, going into the front setback.
What page?
Well, I, I should probably just start at the beginning if it's my turn to-
Okay.
Because otherwise I'll be jumping all around, but, um, okay. So, um, the first question I had, I think, is a very simple one. It's on page nine of twenty-four. And I must be just not thinking clearly, but if you go where it says number one, "Reduce setbacks for stair, for stairs both associated with and disassociated with substantial improvement." So, to me, that is everything. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Correct. We have the standards in three point ten that would apply to nonconforming structures that are elevated. The six point twenty-two standards would apply to all residences as, as drafted.
Okay, it just, it, to me, I got a little confused when I read that, so I don't know if there's a way to make it any clearer.
Is that on the agenda cover sheet?
It is.
Yes, the agenda report.
So you're taking the agenda packet and you're telling the page number that's on the bottom of the download from the whole agenda packet, because some people download and print by sections.
Right.
So everyone, we're on the P D, the complete PDF of the packet download.
So Brandon, the new, any new builds would be afforded the same flexibility with staircases? It's, it's not as flexible. The six point twenty-two standards would apply, and they currently apply to new builds as well as nonconforming structures. But in most cases, three point ten would be beneficial for those homes that don't currently meet the setback and they're being elevated. Um, those standards would, would prevail in most cases, so.
Okay, so, um, the next thing that I was talking about was on page eleven of twenty-four, which is the ordinance. And I was getting confused about the elevated residents and the newly constructed, which I, I believe the newly constructed is in the, is in section six and the other is in the section three. But I was very concerned about some of the stuff in section six. I, I didn't know why we're bringing in so much new construction, and, and maybe we can talk about that when we get there. But it's almost like at that point, why have any setbacks defined at all? Um, because we're basically undoing, um, and, and for new builds, there is a lot more design flexibility. Okay, so let me see, these unintended consequences. And the other thing is, some of the other places, and I know we've had mixed uses on this, but I know like in the minutes, it specifically says that we were looking, we weren't looking at new builds. So there's some conflicts in here, but things may have changed since the minutes were done. Okay, if we, if we go to page fourteen of twenty-four and fifteen of twenty-four, I have several things. One is on the fourteen of twenty-four. I know you were trying to underline any changes, but there was some inconsistency in that. So like, if you look at three point one, the number two, parentheses at the bottom of the page, I think, except as provided in subsection three D below, I think that was supposed to be under, underlined. And so I was getting confused because there were things like that where I couldn't tell if it was old or new. So, please forgive some of my questions if they're pretty obvious.
No, please point those out when you see them.
The next page, fifteen of twenty-four. I believe when it says on A, three A, "The structure may be moved vertically only such at lowest habitable floors elevated above the required design flood elevation." I believe that's a minimum. So if I wanted to go, as long as I didn't hit the building height, the, the maximum height, if I wanted to go, I don't know, four feet above the flood, I could do that.
You could, yes.
And so I, I've thought somewhere in there, we might want to say that it's a minimum to make that clear. Another thing, I, I agree, you know, if, if you're, especially if you're in an AE zone, making a garage makes a lot of sense. But one of the things I questioned, and this is something I've brought up before. It says, "May be converted to parking, storage and building access if in compliance with the structured flood zone and habitable floors are reconstructed in the same footprint and the same floor height as the existing habitable floors." So I hope in your packet, um, there's a page that looks like this, Ginny. It's got a blue banner on it. And, and I've brought this up before, so if you look under the, this is St. Pete Beach, Florida code, August nineteenth, it's current, and it is under chapter one oh six flood control. And it's section one oh six dash five four, single family homes and duplexes. And if you go down to letter four, it says, "There shall be no fill used as structural support higher than sixteen inches above the crown in the road, with the exception that the interior of stem wall construction may be filled." And so when I read this on page fifteen to twenty-four, and it says it has to be the same floor height as the existing habitable floor, that takes away the ability of somebody that's raising their house to put a stem wall in, because they've got to put new walls to hold the house anyway, and be able to raise their garage. And I know so many people that had their cars flooded, and if they had been able to put the stem wall and put, you know, do, do this, so they're keeping their water on their own property, um, they wouldn't have lost, had so much damage. So I don't know why, if somebody's raising their house, they, would they not have the same opportunity as somebody building a house to put in a step, stem wall and raise their garage?
So they, they definitely can, and this was, everything on this page, with the exception of making the, um, subitems lowercase, was passed late last year, or exists in the code previously, it was just amended. But the reason for that standard was, and we don't want to go too far in one direction, because it's very hard to walk it back. If someone has an eight or nine foot floor height and they choose to, instead of elevating, they choose to convert that level to parking, storage and access, which is allowed by the floodplain codes, and then rebuild above, they would be limited to that floor height. It's, it's, it's only for homes that are nonconforming to the setbacks. If someone conforms, if their home conforms to the setbacks, they're not subject to that limitation, so.
So, so then we basically are forcing them to be lower than what they could possibly be?
In, in that case, potentially, um, I have seen one project where they did abandon the lower level. They reestablished the living level above, but they added on three or four feet to that lower level. And that would be permitted, the same as if someone elevated in place. Some homeowners don't have the ability to elevate their homes.
Right, and I understand there's the maximum height and there's other things. But I guess what I would like to see out of here is the requirement that it has to be at the same floor height. Because I believe as people are going through the work of raising their homes and trying to do things to be more resilient, within, you know, the code, they should be able to raise their floors a little bit if they want to. I don't see the harm, and so I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't let them do that.
I think the, well, the, the logic at the time, and again, we, we hadn't really seen many of these cases then. We've seen a lot more now, is that it's to prevent significant, oh, you know, overages above what is existing today. The same way that somebody could elevate in place, they would retain that same floor height. Um, somebody who's abandoning and rebuilding would keep the eight foot or the nine foot floor height they have now instead of going to something much higher. Um, I understand the concern that we just, you know, especially back then, we didn't really know the issues we were gonna be facing, so. That was the logic.
So, so I understand that we are a lot smarter now, that we've been through a couple of big storms. So is there a way to adjust this now, to take this out, so that they have the same, they can follow this same code as someone who is building new? And I realize there's a lot of other variables and parameters, but I don't know why we would just tell them they have to be at the same floor level in the garage.
We can, we can absolutely modify that. That's not a building code limitation. That's entirely zoning. As long as they're out of the floodplain, the building code would be fine with that. And as you pointed out, um, the height would still be limited to the zoning district height, so it wouldn't change anything. I, the, the logic for that was just if somebody had a, you know, eight foot ceiling height and they're at a three foot setback from the property line where they need to be at seven, they can at least preserve and go up. But building back, you know, floor height of eleven feet, you know, something- 11 feet, you know, something substantially higher than what they have today, was something we just didn't want to allow at that time, not knowing how many of these cases we would have. And it's actually not as frequent as I thought it would be. We get maybe a handful of them, a lot just elevate in place, but we can certainly look at changing that if the board agrees.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that. It's actually written in a confusing way, because it says in the same footprint and the same floor height as the existing habitable floor above, which makes no sense, because it's obviously not at the same height as the floor above.
No, I'm just referring to the floor height, so that's, you know, ceiling to floor height of eight feet, but I see what you're saying. We can make that clear.
Sure, the ratio.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I think also the paragraph after that, where it talks about the VE and the coastal A, and then it talks about the AE, that whole section is kind of wobbled, deorded. So, I definitely think, if you wanted to clean that up, there's an opportunity in there to straighten it out a little bit. Okay.
Say the same ceiling to floor height.
Well, I think that's something we're looking at potentially removing, so it, we would, is the board in consensus that we would remove the ceiling to floor height as a limiter for those residences where the living level is being reconstructed above the converted.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want 10-foot ceilings on your livable floor, and nine feet on the lower floors, so you can get that floor height higher, that sounds perfect.
I think the building code handles most of the inconsistencies, too, that would arise from this. As long as someone's not digging under to make a deeper garage, if they raise their house six feet. But I don't think anyone would want to do that.
I don't know how it would help. Okay, if we go on to page 16 of 24, and I'm on letter E, and then there's a little I, two little I's, three little I's, three little I's, and then a four. So I don't think-
Double three little I's, right?
There are double three little I's. But the thing I really wanted to talk about in here, so in the second three little I, it talks about the stairs project from the front of the residence encroach no closer than 10 feet to the front property line. And one of the things that I was trying to show in the stair drawing, is that you can do quite a bit without having to go 10 feet to the property line. It's, seven would do it. So, actually, you know, if you look at the top one, it's, the stairs are six feet, six inches over to the right on the top one, that's 10 foot above grade in this particular example.
Building, though.
It's six feet, six inches from the house. And on the bottom one, which was where the stairs didn't go all the way across, but they went and turned and came back on the second drawing, that one is six feet from the house. So, as far as going into the, why, I don't understand why we need 10 feet to the property line, and I know there's many ways to draw this, but that was where my question came from.
This is saying no closer than 10 feet to the property line, so six is fine, and 10 is fine, you just can't go more than 10.
Right, but-
This is six feet, six from the building, right? Not from the property line?
Right.
Where's the property line?
Well, there isn't really a property line on here. It was just to show that you could fit stairs in without having to go out 10 feet.
Okay, the 10 feet, I think, was from the property line.
Right, that is a minimum, but to your point, section 6.22, and that was for new construction, regardless of which direction we go with that, that was an actual projection off the front of the home, because that's based on a current setback standard. This, if we were looking at potentially a seven-foot projection standard not to be less than 10 feet, that would address both the minimum setback, as well as making sure that there is sufficient space for the two rows of stairs. So potentially, we could consider something like that, a seven-foot projection not to be less than 10 feet, if the board's amenable to that.
Yeah. I think we should, whatever we do, we should allow the homeowners, you know, some flexibility in the type of stairway they want to have to, I mean, I understand, we can, we can, you know, come up with stairway designs that keep everything so jammed up against the house, but, you know, kind of goes back to the balcony discussion. Folks are raising their homes proactively, for whatever reason, all good reasons. They still want a home that they, you know, are proud of living in, and, you know, like the design, and I think it's more their like than what other people might like, right? And I think that we got to give them enough flexibility, because we've, because they're having to go up, we have to give them some leeway and flexibility on some design stuff, so that they're happy with their home. We would all come up with different designs for staircases, or balconies, or what have you, given the choice on any particular home, because we all have different styles. Allowing them to do something, but then doesn't, as long as it doesn't, you know, impede on fire safety, or, you know, some other issues.
I think that's-
That's where I'm getting.
And I hear you, and I appreciate that, and I think some of the other drawings I've done, for example, a lot of times, it will influence where cars can park, for example. And so, you start running into unintended consequences. So, I just think we should always be thoughtful when we're changing something, and quite frankly, most of the people in the city have built to these, you know, codes without, you know, much issue. So, I hear what you're saying, and I, again, I think we don't want to just open Pandora's box, we want to be thoughtful, and at this broad level, you can't look at every consequence. So that's why I think we have the Board of Adjustment, so I just think we need to be thoughtful.
Is there a situation where we've got a non-conforming property, that, non-conforming structure, that is at 10 feet from the property line, so that this would prohibit them from adding stairs at all?
Not 10 feet, but I'm aware of a few, one of which went to the Board of Adjustment, where they were, I believe, at 12 feet, so, and to member Perry's point, we won't capture every single situation. There are many properties that we couldn't write standards for in any reasonable way that need to go to the Board of Adjustment, but the intent of this was to really get maybe 70 to 80% of the ones that we see on a regular basis, and I certainly think we could add in a maximum projection off the front of the building standard, so those homes that are at 20 feet, where they need to put two rows of stairs up, and, you know, they can comply with a 13-foot setback instead of a 10, that would be what they would be limited to, if that's something the board would like to consider. How do you feel about that?
I think we're looking for solutions, so, you know.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Something that's a protrusion of the house measurement as opposed to the setback?
Yeah, yeah.
And one of the other things, Brandon, on this, I looked at this section, and also 6.22 on page 22 of 24. And I wasn't clear that these two sections, I know this one references 6.22, but I'm not sure they all match, because when you get down to section 2.2, two, letter one, and then you go into stairs, earlier, we were talking about three feet on page 16 to 24. Here, it says two feet, and I thought in your presentation, you were talking about three feet. So I think there's some inconsistencies perhaps, or maybe I'm just reading it wrong.
Well, with 6.22C1, open stairs are allowed to encroach three feet, provided that they're not setback less than two feet. Is that?
Okay. I know, I know, I was listening to the commission meeting, and one of the commissioners, I can't remember who it was, but she said something to the effect about having someone's stairs come, like, within, stopping within two feet of her property, and that was uncomfortable, or, you know, somebody could have a window there, or, you know, I mean, again, I think, to me, back to the quality of life, if your neighbor is going to be, you know, basically having to walk through your, you know, yard to get to their place, I mean, it's just, it can be a little uncomfortable. So that's why I was asking about that, because it is a quality of life for everyone. The next thing I had was on page 18, I think, of 24. And when we were talking, like, at the bottom of page eight, on 18 to 24, it's number one at the very bottom, it says, "Any non-conforming shall be brought into conformity with regulations whenever the accessory structure is substantially improved." And I started trying to remember where I had ever seen, like, an SI or an SD on an ancillary structure. So, I didn't know how that was determined, and I kind of was looking for some clarification, because I haven't seen a way that you can do a separate SI and SD on, like, a stand room garage or something.
So it won't be a FEMA certification, it won't be something that's, you know, part of the appraisal in most cases, but we will get estimates, and we see it frequently, for signs that are non-conforming. We do get an independent estimate to determine whether it passes that threshold, and it's not just looking at it from a floodplain standpoint. We will be looking at the actual depreciated value as defined.
Do you need a minute?
Yeah, if the board's amenable, could we take a quick five-minute intermission?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Back on page eighteen of twenty-four, nineteen of twenty-four, we were talking about, number one, substantially improved, and I just, to me, I thought it was confusing when I saw substantially improved or substantial damage, because I immediately went to the FEMA definitions. So I don't know if there's a way to make that clear, because even if you go down on nineteen to twenty-four at number A, the accessory structure is a deck, cover, gazebo, or pool that does not sustain substantial damage and is not proposed to be substantially improved in conjunction with the primary structure. So that's part of the reason I was saying, gee, do we have an SISD on a ancillary structure? Okay, now, also on page eighteen, where was it? No, there was a...
There is an A, B, C.
Oh, I lied. It's back on page eighteen of twenty-four, and it's number six. And it says, "Permits to rebuild under these provisions shall be obtained within one year of the catastrophic loss." And I know that we're trying to rush this because we want to help people as much as we can right now. So I'm assuming that this, whenever this goes forward, there's going to be a request for an extension or somehow some process associated with that.
Correct, yes, and we've had multiple homeowners, and that is specifically to those homeowners who have a nonconforming number of units that want to redevelop. The only change there was to bring it into compliance with our current code, which is a requirement for design flood instead of base flood, but we were aware there's going to need to be some declaration to extend, so.
Okay, all right, on page nineteen of twenty-four, if we go down to the letter F at the bottom of the page, it says, "Repairs and maintenance maintaining safe condition." It says, "Repairs and maintenance of nonconforming structures are permitted," and I didn't know if that meant you needed a permit or if that meant they were allowed, because on the next page you have something about placement regal storage building shall require a building permit. So my permitting is getting confused.
Okay, we could change that, I understand.
Okay, okay, let's see. Okay, and then we already talked a little bit about six point one point three, where we're talking about new construction in this whole section, I believe. Some of this, I just, again, I think about making sure we think about unintended consequences. If we go to page twenty-two of twenty-four, towards the top of the page, there's a number one, and it says, "The bottom of the equipment shall be elevated no higher than one foot above the structure's lowest floor." And I was trying to determine if you meant the lowest living floor or the...
Yes, that's a floodplain term, and the lowest floor for rating purposes typically follows that, is the lowest living floor.
Okay, I don't know that most people would know that reading.
I understand.
I was like, is it garage floor, or is it the lowest, especially if we're talking about a place that's up high. The next one I had is number five, "The top of the equipment shall not exceed the height of the ridge roof of the structure to which it is attached or associated." And this goes to your point, a lot of people are putting these things on top of their roof, so they're definitely above the ridge line.
And the only, this would only apply to that equipment that is located within a required setback. They can certainly put it on their roof if they wanted, but this would be for that equipment that doesn't currently conform with the code setback. They would be able to elevate and place.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let me see here. Okay, and then we already talked about the two and three feet. So I think, may encroach up to seven feet required front yard provides stairs no closer than two feet. So here's, here is seven feet, and here's two feet. So again, I was just trying to tick and tie all the different footages. And we don't really talk too much about the side property line. In some places, we say it has to be a minimum all the way around, but in other places, we don't talk about the side setback. So I just wanted to point that out, to see if there was any places where that might need to be clarified.
So the purpose with this was not to allow any additional encroachment to the side or the rear, although we did talk about potentially adding the balconies into the rear, which I'll bring back. This was specifically for the front property encroachment, so the side, even if it were to be open with an open base, the side setback encroachment allowed would still only be three feet. That would not change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, and this is a major item, we'll probably take this forward to the city commission next week, just to give them the initial feedback, keep it as a discussion item, and then bring that back to this board. Thank you all for the feedback, but is it the consensus of the board, or are there differing opinions on the elements of this that apply to new construction? What are your thoughts on the additional stair encroachments for new construction? And I guess, storage buildings would apply as well, that would be a new construction permission.
My thought on new construction is I don't know why you need it, because you can design to meet the code. And if we open it up to new construction without any kind of parameter, then we don't have a code. It's open to everybody. And I worry about unintended consequences. And, you know, we built a house here several years ago, we did things within the code. I mean, that's what we had to do, and I still think we have a fine house.
Sure you do.
I would agree, I just want to ask the question, like, why are you even asking the question?
So, this was an addition since the last discussion we had on this with the planning board, we were not talking about new construction, we were talking only about elevation and reconstruction, getting homes up to a minimum floodplain standard. It was added on to the commission, and the reason why I came forward with seven feet was because that is, and member Perry, you showed how it could be accommodated with less than that, but we do have property owners who, in redeveloping, have expressed an interest in having a landing. Twelve feet is where it kicks in, but we've heard even less than that, just for various access purposes, they want a landing on their stairs. And if they build the home at twenty feet, having that projection, it's either one run of stairs at three feet wide, or with the landing, they're at six to seven feet in depth off the front of that structure. So accommodating a landing at the front would require they set the front of the home back further than the minimum setback required by the code, and maybe that's what they have to do, but that's why that was brought forward, and that's part of the discussion we have with the commission, so.
I think that new builds have enough parameters to work with in the front for staircases, from the designs I've worked on and seen.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that as well. Thank you. So are we comfortable with a motion?
We need to recap, kind of, what the changes are for Brandon's...
Yeah, Brandon, are you comfortable with a motion to approve with suggested changes?
If you don't mind, I'd just like to go through the suggested changes first, I'll try to... So we would look at, just starting at the top of the list and going down, we would look at allowing additional balcony encroachments into the rear yard when they're in the same footprint, same enclosure as the balcony that was existing prior to elevation. We need to look at the depth of the landing that is permitted, it looks like the stairs can be accommodated with a little bit less than seven feet, but that is a standard we're likely, I'm going to look, likely look at moving forward. Again, currently, seven feet is the allowed encroachment for new home stairs. I'm going to look at removing that, we're not looking at new homes. It's the recommendation of the board that we only address those homes that are being elevated or reconstructed. It would be a seven-foot projection maximum off the front of the home, minimum five-foot setback for homes in most areas of the city. In Passageway, it would be five feet minimum setback, seven-foot projection. We need to talk about, we need to better define what a mechanical equipment is in the context of storage buildings. There were some Scrivener's errors that need to be corrected related to repetition of sub-items. We need to fix the language in the agenda packet, the language about stairs associated with and disassociated with, which is changing anyway, because we are not looking at new construction based on the recommendation. We're looking at making sure that the language on page fourteen of the packet, which pertains to nonconforming structures, is consistent with what is currently in the code, just making sure that none of the language that's shown on your packet, page fourteen, was amended under these, under this current ordinance, without being noted as such. Looking at page fifteen, we need to better clarify that elevation above the floodplain, above the design flood, is a minimum, it's not a requirement. We are looking at removing the same floor height limitation for those homeowners who choose to abandon the first level, turn it into parking, storage, and access, and reconstruct the living level above. If they had an eight-foot floor height previously, ceiling, floor-to-ceiling height, they could go to nine or ten if they desired, as long as they're compliant with the height limitation for the zoning district. There's some cleanup that needs to be done in the succeeding section, there were a few pages where we repeated the three I's, and then I believe on the following page, there was a B repeated as well. We are looking again at the maximum seven-foot front extension in section three point ten, look at the use of the term substantial improvement and substantial damage throughout the code to make sure that it is, clarifies that it's not just a floodplain requirement, it applies to accessory ancillary structures as well. The bottom of page nine of the amendments, which is page nineteen of your packet, changed to allow that repair and maintenance of nonconforming structures are allowed, or something that's not related to building permits. And then top of page twenty-two, we need to change that to lowest living floor, some other language that is clearer. And then, just to repeat, new homes, we are, is recommended by the board, would not be allowed the additional stair encroachments that are proposed, so that section six point twenty-two would be stricken, and some parts of that would be moved into three ten, the openness requirements and so on. Does that appear to cover everything?
I have just a quick follow-up question. What's the purpose for the passageway exception again? Just to remind you, kind of, is that...
Their setbacks are naturally less, they're...
Passageway proper, is that Vena as well?
That's only passageway, Vena has a twenty-foot front setback, passageway's usually ten, so.
And then, it was six dot two two G, you were going to attempt to strike cul-de-sac?
Yes. Thank you.
And this is, in six dot one four and six dot, yeah, I think it's just six dot one four and six dot two two, there are a few instances of stricken language that had yard setback, and then the replacement language just said yard, so I think that was just left off.
You had said six point two two, and then...
Six dot one four.
Thank you.
For example, six dot one four D, the new D, encroaches into a required yard versus yard setback.
Thank you.
Does that cover everyone's concerns? Okay?
Yeah.
All right, do I have a, what would be a motion to approve the modifications that we discussed?
I move that we approve with the modifications just outlined.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Member Growcut?
Yes.
Member Izzy?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Angelidis?
Yes.
Chair Hubbard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the local planning agency business, so we will adjourn as a local planning agency and reconvene as the planning board. We are on to discussion item five A, October ninth, Town Center. Thank you, Chair. A short presentation, this is a follow-up presentation to a forum we had on the ninth, I know we had at least one member present, if we can get that PowerPoint pulled up. So this was just a week and a half ago, on Thursday, October ninth, we met with property owners, local residents, and business owners to discuss the Town Center to Coquina West District. Just like the east side, which has formed in Corey Landings, the TC two West currently promotes large block-level parcel assemblage, it has not been realized, as it has for the Corey Landings property. The effort that we are undertaking is intended to address short and medium-term code permissions for redevelopment, it does not address the more significant visioning that also, that often accompanies these efforts, is hypovisioning the city undertook in the mid-two thousands, early twenty-tens, to generate a vision and the policies for these areas. We're looking really at short and medium-term code modifications, trying to be respectful that there may be future efforts, whether it's a comprehensive plan reevaluation, moving forward with a community redevelopment agency, should that be addressed by the commission, any potential amendments that could come forward based on the area being considered a historic district. These are things we're going to try to be respectful of in these amendments, but we're really looking more at the zoning and the land use as it relates to development potential at the, on that side of the Town Center District. So we've identified a few challenges, several others were brought up at the meeting. The first is that the area currently has a horizontal mix of uses, vertical is the development type that is preferred. Again, looking at the lot areas, the acreages of each of those blocks, at the time, when this was being put together in the mid-two thousands, early twenty-tens, the vision was that each of these blocks would be purchased, they would be redeveloped as one large seven to eight-story redevelopment project. You would have the commercial, the office, the restaurants down at the ground level, above that would be lodging or residential. That has not come to fruition on this west side at this point in time. I believe several years ago, there was a proposal for a less than one full block redevelopment that never took hold, and we haven't seen it since. There are significant setbacks and buffering requirements for commercial adjacent to standalone residential, so that is a challenge we're going to have to address if we move forward with any kind of code amendments. Currently, these are lots that have between eighty and one hundred and ten feet in depth. The code requires for commercial that is adjacent to residential, especially single and two-family residential, the setback is thirty to thirty-five feet. In some instances, there's very significant buffer requirements, so if this is an area where the city would like to preserve commercial, we do need to be respectful of that for anything that we allow over and above what the code currently provides for. We need to make sure that those commercial developments can continue to thrive, we can continue to see that horizontal mix, if that's something that is desired. This district, and why we're bringing this forward to look at to begin with, is that there is a very large concentration of nonconforming standalone residential and lodging. Currently, this district, and as we talked about in the preceding item, the city is very strict when it comes to standalone, nonconforming uses, they cannot be added on to, they cannot be redeveloped, they can't be elevated, substantially improved. It's not just a floodplain issue, it's a use issue, so once they pass that threshold, they can elevate the building, but they can't have the residence in it anymore based on the current standards. So we have a large number of those in this area, particularly on the south side of Seventy-Sixth, on the north side of Seventy-Third, the vast majority of those properties are standalone residential or lodging uses. So they may be compatible with what's across the street, but they're not compatible with the zoning, so that's something we need to be careful with. And we also need to look at if the desire of the community is to still see those large block-level mixed-use projects, allowing one property on a block to redevelop is likely to preclude them unless we lower the acreage thresholds we look at, ensuring that these large developments could still be, could still be conforming with and still be able to be developed with a parcel or two on the block missing. So you can see here, this is a map similar to what we presented last week, I did update one of these properties based on the feedback I received at the meeting, but you can see that there really is a horizontal use mix in this area. Facing Seventy-Sixth Avenue, facing Seventy-Third, you do see primarily residential. There is one property in the middle of Seventy-Sixth that is licensed as a lodging, but to my understanding, it's being used for longer-term residential. But this district got to the Town Center in a few different ways, those properties that face south and face north had previously been zoned for residential. Those properties toward the center, where you do actually see a significant density of commercial uses, those had originally been developed as commercial, and they were zoned as commercial going back decades and decades. Some of them preceded city zoning, but they've been used that way for a very long time. The properties that face towards Seventy-Sixth and towards Seventy-Third had previously had a residential zoning, which is likely why you see that mix that we have today. So what we heard from the meeting, this didn't cover every single issue, but it looked really, what we're looking at moving forward is that there did seem to be some consensus on allowing for redevelopment, there was interest in seeing redevelopment in that area of the city. There were concerns about, well, there was interest in having floodplain-compliant buildings and abutified street skapes, some of those embellishments that come along with redevelopment. There was a desire to allow for multifamily development without mixed use or full-block consolidation, so that's again, getting into the future land use, getting into the zoning of the properties. There did seem to be, not consensus, we didn't poll, but there did seem to be interest among those who spoke at the meeting, that there would be allowed that, a multifamily development type that is not currently allowed under the code. That is particularly the case where residential faces across the street from standalone residential that is currently allowed under our codes to be residential. Those would be the properties on the south side of Seventy-Sixth, the north side of Seventy-Third avenues. There did seem to be some interest in reconsidering height and number of floors, that would be for the standalone developments. Currently, the commercial projects can be up to three stories tall, the residential projects are only allowed as part of the mixed use, and they would be allowed to be three to four floors in height, but for any kind of standalone residential, there was interest in keeping it at a lower height than what the code would currently allow for those mixed-use projects, looking more at the three to four floor range, so thirty to forty feet in height at maximum. There was still interest in preserving and allowing for commercial development, the, there was not any interest expressed that I heard on disallowing commercial development or phasing that out. They did want to see that horizontal mix and allowing for multi-tenant, multi-tenant commercial developments if possible, looking at something, one of the examples brought up was a smaller John's Pass. There were concerns about rooftop uses adjacent to residential, but one of the comments brought up at the meeting, and I believe they were a residential property owner, is that there is an understanding that some of those buffering and setback requirements may need to be waived to preserve that commercial character, if this is something that we look at moving forward on. We might need to address those rooftop uses where a landscape buffer or a greater setback wouldn't necessarily help in a significant regard, but in terms of a retail use or a restaurant use and enclosed space adjacent to residential, there was some understanding that we would likely need to look at reducing those buffers in this area. We did hear from one commercial property owner, I don't believe they owned property within the TC two, but it likely applies here as well. They just had a disinterest in redeveloping any kind of at-grade commercial. The floodplain permissions allow for floodproofing for commercial structures, office structures that are built at grade, but just from a insurance standpoint, in terms of resiliency for that property owner, they did not have any interest in developing accessible at-grade commercial development. Even with the Corey Landings project, what we're seeing is that they're not elevating a full story, but they are going above the floodplain with the commercial development... a full story, but they are going above the floodplain with the commercial development that they're undertaking. So that is, you know, we haven't seen a lot of at-grade development of commercial in the city, and at least among the recent projects, we have seen some degree of elevation to them.
Is multifamily allowed to be at-grade?
It's not, no. It's the same for lodging. Lodging also cannot be developed at grade. Speaking of which, there was some interest in allowing development to, or sorry, lodging to remain and redevelop. We have the Bellis Arena Inn. We have the project that is now being used for longer-term rentals, but they maintain that lodging license on the south side of 76th Avenue. There was interest in allowing those lodging properties to redevelop. I did meet with the Bellis Arena property owners right after the storm, and that was something they expressed to me. They would like to look at elevating, just getting their structure out of the floodplain, which is currently not permitted based on the, based on the non-conforming use standards. We recognize, and this was reiterated at the meeting, the district does face unique pressures due to the extent of damage and nonconformities. There's really nowhere else in the city that has this use mix, where you don't see the vertical mixed use, you see the horizontal. We do a variance of Passer Grille, particularly around 8th Avenue, but that still has that vertical mix in certain areas. We don't, we don't really have that, and we haven't seen that here along 75th Avenue and Corey in the Town Center 2. There were some items that were brought up that really fall under a more long-term visioning process, particularly a community redevelopment area, if that's something that the city chooses to move forward on. Looking at one-way streets west of Gulf Boulevard, relocating the street or public space to be along the waterfront, these were items that were brought up at the meeting. They, they maybe extend a little bit past what we're looking at in this phase, but it's certainly something we can look at in the future. So just talking about next steps, this is going to be a little bit more involved of a process. It's not as simple as putting an ordinance together, making the modifications, and taking it forward. We are going to present the meeting outcomes to the City Commission with a concept ideas in November. I believe we may only have one meeting, so that'll likely be the first meeting in November. After that, we will engage with our county partners, with Ford Pinellas. Pinellas is a relatively unusual county. We have both our local comprehensive plan that always goes to the state, but we also have the countywide rules, and in this area, we have what is known as an activity center, not our zoning activity center. It's an actual designation the county institutes, and that allows us to have more flexibility in land use and zoning than we would be allowed under a typical zoning code. We will have to likely amend that in order to be able to move these comprehensive plan amendments forward. So it'll be both the zoning code, it'll be the comprehensive plan, and it'll be our special area plan through the county. We're projecting that once we have consensus on direction, the process is likely to be about four to six months. Of course, we'll be bringing drafts and concepts back to the planning board, but we will need to go through our local hearings, our county hearings, and we do provide for up to three months for a state review. They get up to ninety days to review. So based on that, I just wanted to share where we were at. Like I mentioned, I know we, we had at least one member present. If you have any feedback or any feedback on what I just presented generally, we'd be happy to hear it.
I thought that it, the meeting went extremely well. The people were very happy to have an opportunity to speak, and, you know, I, I just think it was very well done, and I think the outcome was positive.
So, did you get the feeling a lot of the people there were owners in that?
Yes, definitely. And they definitely understood the issues, and they also were talking about possible solutions, and I think it was a very good dialogue.
It's, that's a tough district. I, I mean, it seems ideal for multifamily, and then I know as soon as you put a multifamily unit right behind Toasted Bunky, the complaints about noise are going to start rolling in. What, what kind of feedback did the commercial owners have? Did they want to convert from commercial to something else?
We didn't hear any of that. There were not many commercial owners that operated active uses. I believe the owner of the storage buildings was present, and they were, they were listening. They gave great feedback. It was just not related to the, the restaurant uses, but it's, there, there was a recognition, I believe there were two comments made, that the good thing about allowing standalone residential is that making it more permissive, you can, you can agree to some stipulations that reduce the buffers, reduce the, you know, demands and requirements for the commercial because it's not currently allowed. That's something we can work through, and we are going to really need to get down to the parcel level on some of those because we, of course, do have the commercial uses, but there's a possibility in the future that a commercial use gets developed right next to a single-family home, and we need to address how that's going to be handled. But I think moving forward, staff would agree with what we heard at the meeting, which was to allow multifamily specifically. A lot of our buffer requirements and, and just noise limitations and performance standards are lower for multifamily than they are for commercial, for single-family, so.
That was kind of like a transition. You know, the expectations are different, so it was like a transition from the commercial to the multi, to the single.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. If, if there was a high desire for commercial, several of those lots would be getting built on right now, and, and just like Corey Landings that's sat there, so.
Terry, I think you brought up or voiced a little frustration or concern at one of the meetings about the vision for the Town Center. What means, and, and I, it's something that I agree with and I felt. So feedback from me, for the commission, would be, I mean, we could keep having all these discussions, but until we readdress the vision of what we want St. Pete Beach to look like in, in the, all the various districts, then it's, it's just, you know, we'll go through this spinning our wheel about what people think. Have meetings in town halls and we get, but ultimately, what is the vision, right? And the vision needs to be updated because that's where you start, right? You start with a solid vision that may, may not, everybody may not agree upon it, but it needs to be the vision, and then you can move forward. Right, right now, I think, you know, it's just, we're going to keep spinning wheels on things because there's no clear vision out there, or there's a lot of confusion over what the vision should be. So I, I thought it was well said the other night by you, Terry.
Any other comments? Okay. Next, discussion item 5B is Member Perry's questions about the state update on Phil.
So we've started to engage with them. I did have our first discussion last week, and a lot of that is land development code updates, but we are talking about Phil. From my understanding, and my manager might be able to correct me on this, but I believe that the City Commission is going to be scheduling a discussion on Phil as part of their strategic visioning. So that's something we're going to have more direction on. We are still going to engage with the state. I just, I haven't had a chance to talk with them yet, so.
Well, thank you.
Okay. And discussion 5C, Member Growcott had questions about the density pool.
Yes, so on the September 15th, the draft report for the valuation was expected. I was just wondering where we were with that. I know we were going forward with that, that first phase of that study. Have we received the results of that?
We are meeting with him on Thursday. What we've gotten so far is not the actual real estate analysis, and if we ever have that done, we, we don't know. That'll be part of the purpose of the discussion, but what we introduced and what we discussed about the Corey Landings project last week was some of the other communities that do expect some return on values, some fee and lieu in exchange for density units, whether it's a basis of zoning or whether it's from an actual pool. It's, it's very, very challenging to find another community that both has a pool, is our size, and has the limit on the number of units. There, I, I haven't found anything countywide, and neither did the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, that really gets at what we're looking at here. There are comparable communities, but a lot of them promote affordable housing. Our, our range of benefits are a little bit more extensive, although we do have workforce housing as a, as a potential benefit of a project. So we're going to be engaging with them on Thursday, and I'll hopefully have, and I'll make sure to add to the agenda for, for next month.
A question. So has staffs done the research and, and looked for compatible communities and are unable to, to identify one? Is there a reason, I mean, do you advise there's a reason why there's not a compatible?
So I think a lot of communities, and this is really throughout the country, I mean, we've looked as far out as Seattle, and they have a zoning density bonus, but it's not a pool. It's, certain communities will have a bonus where if you provide a certain square footage of a desired commercial type or make certain streetscape improvements, they will allow for a bonus up to a certain rate. In some cases, they have a fee and lieu where it may not be possible to provide them right in front of the project site, but they can pay into a fund that's used in the vicinity. Clearwater has a pool, but it's, I think, 12 times ours, so it's just, and they also have other bonuses that can be achieved. So we're obviously, you know, it's, there, there aren't many communities that have a density pool that face the floodplain limitations that we do and, and some of the, you know, the state limitations, and it's just the confluence of all of those makes it a challenge to find a comparable.
Were there any lessons learned from looking at how other communities are doing it, with like the bonus versus the pool, or?
I think Tampa gave fairly good guidance when it came to how do we actually value these projects, and I think we're looking, we're not looking at a particular project. We're looking at something portable for any development that utilizes the density pool, and it could be extended to the lodging projects as well, but what is the actual reasonable return on benefits, recognizing that some developments are not going to be luxury projects. Some might be median-income focused projects that the city still finds to be desirable if it were workforce housing, if that's something we would like to see in a development. How do we value those projects? And looking at how other communities have already gone through the process of defining where do we get these values from, what percentage of the project, you know, many communities look at the bonus intensity or density, and they take some portion of that instead of looking at the project as a whole. Things like that are useful, and as we get more into the weeds on it, we'll, you know, we'll have better direction than that.
Did we arrive at having a pool because of some type of critical limit we were attempting to avoid hitting?
So the large resort district originally allowed 18 residential units per acre, and we reduced that to 15, so that balance of 195 is where that pool came from. The other pools, the county was a little bit more permissive on at the time, and we allowed those largely for redevelopment, looking at existing density, so.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.